All right, thank you everyone for their patience as we worked our way through the public, well, that hearing. At this time, I will call this evening's meeting to order at 6:50. We will have the invocation by Pastor Joseph Durnum, or chaplain, he's a chaplain with the Clayton County Police Department. It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please stand with me.
Let us pray together. Father God, we come at this time to just acknowledge you. You are holy and we desperately need you. And so, we come before you just for a moment to acknowledge that we desire you to be present in this meeting. We thank you for the authority that you're the one who delegates to all who have it. So, we pray, Lord, as we wear these masks, that you would remind us of who we are and who you are. And we pray for our leadership, for our chairman and the other commissioners as they make decisions that affect the whole county, that you would give them your wisdom and your knowledge and heart and ears to listen to what you would lead them to do. We thank you for this county and we thank you for all that you're doing in this county. And we just give you praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the September 21st Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments to offer at this time?
All right, any amendments, regulations to the minutes. All right, here and then, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. I'll make the motions, they're second.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issued unanimous?
Next, the board will hear a public comment. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residence, seat for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Atanya Jean Funny.
Good evening. Atanya Jean Funny, unincorporated Clayton County. To the board chair and commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As a Haitian American, I am outraged by the treatment of the Haitian immigrants in Texas. This treatment was cruel and inhumane. I couldn't believe I was looking at pictures from 2021. It felt like 1864. And I'm asking our elected officials on every level to assist in changing policies that will allow for fair procedures for immigrants of all countries and not just a select few. I'm also here today to speak about the infrastructure on Panhandle Road. As you all know, the Michelle Obama Elementary School and a bus depot are being built. And I don't see anything happening with our roads. As you can tell, as you know, when Eddie White was built, a middle lane was added to alleviate the traffic coming and going out of the school. And that's when there was less residents there. So, now with the amount of residents we have on Panhandle Road, nothing has been done with the road. And also, we are in the middle of a pedestrian safety initiative, but no sidewalk has been added to those constructions. I did go to the Board of Education and the chair told me that that was a county issue. So, I'm coming to you all today to ask for designation of a middle lane on Panhandle Road, turning lanes going in and out of the bus depot and the elementary school, and an extension of the sidewalk. As you know, there's a subdivision right next door and many of those families may be able to walk to school if there was a sidewalk there. And with the minute I have left, lastly, I would like to speak about the trash and the grass in Clayton County. I have never seen so much trash on our roads and streets. And I would like to suggest that as we look at companies to pick up trash, that maybe we subcontract some of those companies to help with the trash pickup. And also, if we're gonna ask for volunteers to go around and pick up trash, we can't even get to the trash because of the grass and how high the grass is. So, I hope that we are looking at how, what we can do, because I don't think there's any area in Clayton County that's not affected by all the trash and how high the grass is. And those are my comments for today. Thank you very much.
Ms. Funny, first of all, Ms. Atanya Jean Funny, so that we get your name right, in honor of your Haitian background. I want to say thank you for always being a constant citizen. Secondly, actually, I had a meeting a few weeks ago, Mr. Matarca was here, because it was brought to my attention about the roadway when I saw the school opening. And I brought in Dr. Smith, who came to represent the school system. And it was stated to him, without bringing it to the board, that the Board of Commissioners did not provide funding for it, but it was never presented to us. We have had that conversation, but it's imperative that as a board, we're consistent in everything that we do. And so, I am clear on it, but also be reminded, things such as transportation, not transportation, but yeah, the transportation in the department and all of that, that falls under operations. So, if direction is not given for those things to happen, or if they're not ongoing conversations as it's happening, then this is what happens. It falls between the cracks. As your commissioner, I apologize, but as a policymaker, I can only address the policies and deal with it once it's found out. So, I apologize to you, but I have already asked for the staff, because of that, to look at going ahead and bringing it before us. I keep saying, we got 18 million sitting there, there's a reason I say it. On the trash, I agree. Our folks are doing the best that they can to pick it up, but there were times they weren't even able to go out because of gas. And again, that falls under operations. I got an email today from an assistant from the operations division about a concern on the trash, and it came to the policymaker as opposed to the operational side taking care of operations. So, I apologize to you.
Thank you, Ms. Funny.
Thank you.
Wanda Singleton. Wanda Singleton. Oh, wait a minute. Are you Ms. Singleton?
Yes.
Okay. Are you here for the zoning hearing?
Yes, for the one.
Okay, we'll have a public hearing on that in a minute.
On how we did it for?
If that's one of the developments.
You want me to wait?
Yes, I mean, you've signed up, so if you've got three minutes that you want to talk about anything, you can feel free to do so. Otherwise, if you're here specifically to speak on that zoning request, then yes, you can come back when I call for that, for that request.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Gusta.
Oh, Maury Gusta is my name. But I come before you to discuss a concern that is impacting my community in the unincorporated part of Clayton County. I'm a resident of the unincorporated part of Ellwood. And we are constantly dealing with illegal dumping of trash on our major roads and highways. And currently, we have a mattress in front of treadmats. We also have eight bags of trash on Grant Road. And there's a tent across the street from Wendy's, and we have 17 tires on Grant Road currently. The trash mentioned only encompasses two roads, but trash is literally everywhere within District 1. My neighbors and I constantly report the trash eyesore on the Clayton app, but even when it's clean, the following week, we have just as much trash as the previous week. After talking with several of my community members in Ellwood, and I'm standing here in front of you, asking that you highly consider mandatory trash pickup. My neighbors in Ellwood all live in homes, we don't have apartments in Ellwood. Our home value and health are two very important things. And studies show that the eyesight of trash will bring down the value of your home by 6%. Also, from a taxpayer's standpoint, we are constantly wasting money to clean up the illegal dumping that's happening in our district and community. The county cleaned up Grant Road with over 26 bags of trash, but the following week, we had just as much trash dumped all over, again, on Grant and Enville Block. And this is just one example. I'm seeing the same issue in Rex, Conley, and Marl. Having a mandatory trash pickup program for the county will not completely resolve the issue, but it will help lessen the amount of trash that is seen. We want our property investment protected, and we want to have the option of recycling, which is not a current option currently. Having a mandatory trash pickup will lessen our garbage bills monthly, because it will be done in bulk and not individually. Having a mandatory trash pickup program would discourage illegal dumping, litter, and improper disposal of waste. Having trash on our streets, neighborhoods, and communities is a public health concern. The huge piles of trash and hazardous waste seep into our soil and water, which contaminates our vegetation and drinking water. The trash can impact our health, because people develop asthma and cancer. According to a 2020 study done in Georgia from the Department of Health, it showed that Clayton County has the highest number of people that live with asthma out of every 100,000 individuals than any other metro Atlanta county. Furthermore, the trash leads to diseases amongst wildlife and attracts more rodents. Illegal dumping is constantly happening within our community, and we have to start taking this issue seriously. Illegal dumping is a crime that needs to be heavily enforced by law enforcement through heavy fines and through the advertisement of no littering signs. Also, we need to address this strategically, not only through mandatory trash pickup, but also through education. Creating recycle programs at our schools and having students do a project on the impacts of trash when it comes to our health. We need to place cameras around our community where we have the heavy dumping of trash, and we need to use social media.
Mr. Gusta, your time is up, but let me also say this, I held a district meeting on Saturday.
Correct.
And a lot of your neighbors voiced the same interests, not interests, but concerns. And between code enforcement, PD, they were coming up with some action plans on which to address it. But you know, like I know, as soon as you clean up one area, next day is the same. We have to increase fines, that is one, but we have to work with our state court judges in reference to that, as well as magistrate court judges. But we also gotta take it upon ourselves to have pride in our community and stop dumping. And you know, it's a hard fix when you have people that's passing through our community also dumping. They see those little dark areas as dumping sites. So, we're even contemplating trying to do something with the light in those areas as well. But thank you for your minutes. Thank you. Elmenor Lord, Ms. Lord. Good evening.
My name is Elmenor Lord, and I'm here to voice my opinion, because I'm still harassed in my house every day, morning, noon, and night. Even my AC at the back, my AC turns blue during the day and during the night. And I'm so scared for my life, because I don't know if it gives cancer what my neighbor is putting into it. And he puts the light at the back of my house, my yard, every day, every night. I have to put up the black curtain, so I don't know why is he doing all this? And I'm not getting no help. I have it on the video when I showed it, there is no help, no help. In the nights, my backyard turned blue, my front yard turned blue. So, I don't know if it give cancer. At nights, I can't sleep, because during the night, I would heard him throw down heavy stuff, and if I'm in my deep sleep, I would just wake up. I don't know if it would give me a heart attack. So, I'm being harassed in my house every day, 24/7. Even the rain that fell, I have to lift my house early this morning. Every day, I have to lift my house and find somewhere to go, because of the harassment in my house through my neighbors. And this is so ashamed, because I'm a citizen of Clayton County, and I'm a senior citizen, and I've been living there 16 years, and it's the first I've ever experienced something like this. And it started going two years, since last 2000, a part of 2019, until now. And there is no peace in my house. Every Sunday, I have to get out and go to church, ask the church people to pray for me, my pastor. And it is still going on with my neighbor. No peace. Me and his girlfriend, no peace, and I've not done anything to ease people. So, I need help. I need help. I don't know how am I going to get any help again? But I ask the Lord, that's what I'm praying for, that one day it will soon be over. It's either I die or whatever, but I need help. I need help. Please help me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public hearing. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, second, the motion, any questions on any of the items? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issued unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the next items are zoning public hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item.
Madam Clerk, we need to do the board appointments. I believe we have two on here.
Yes, you're correct.
All right, first board appointment is for Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities. This is Commissioner Davis's selection. Ms. Janice Scott has resigned from the Development of the Department of Developmental Health and Development Disabilities, Region 3 Advisory Council. New appointment starts immediately and will expire February 28th, 2024. Commissioner Davis, you have a recommendation for us?
I am still waiting on two individuals I contacted, so I move that we hold that until, or that meeting be October 5th?
Okay. Madam Clerk, hold that one for the October 5th meeting. Next board appointment is zoning advisory board. It's at large. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Addie Whitaker on the zoning advisory board. The term will begin immediately and will expire August 19th, 2022. This is an at-large appointment. Madam Clerk, I'm gonna ask you to hold that till October 5th as well.
Mr. Chairman, now the next items are zoning items. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by laws to be a zoning decision, and each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their presentation within the 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking into the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profanity, derogatory language not be permitted. Holding up signs, clapping, and yelling will not be permitted, but a show of hands or standing will be permitted to show support, court, or opposition to a speaker's position. The first zoning item is number 31, BOC 2105-0117, which is a CUP to withdraw requests to develop a warehouse, greenhouse, and light manufacturing.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and board members. This petition before you tonight, the applicant notified staff that failure to get the state license required them to, well, prompted them to withdraw their request. So, ZAG recommended to support the withdrawal, and this is the request before you tonight for this request.
Okay, and they put that to you and write?
That's correct. We have a formal documentation stating their withdrawal, which was emailed to staff.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to accept the withdrawal. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issued unanimous?
The next zoning item is BOC 2102-0098, which is FLEM to amend TCU to MDR to allow a PUD residential development.
Again, this request is for a future land use map amendment. Planning and zoning staff recommended for approval of this request. The zoning advisory board recommended approval of this request as well. And the applicant is here to make a statement on their potential table.
All right, is applicant present? Ms. Battles, is yours?
Yeah, I'm asking, good evening, everyone. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia 30084. The applicant is asking for this matter to be tabled to the hearing next month.
Commissioner?
I have received, and I move that we table this until the October 19th meeting.
All right, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issued unanimous? Ms. Battle?
The next zoning item is BOC 2102-0097, which is a PUD rezone, AG to PUD for 276 single-family, 112-town homes, unit and office space.
This is the associated rezoning request for the PUD request, so the applicant, again, would like to table this request, since it's associated with the land use map amendment.
Ms. Battle?
Yeah, Michelle Battle with Battle Law. I don't know if I have to say my address again, but we are asking for this matter to be tabled as well until next month.
Commissioner Davis?
I motion that we table this until October 19th.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issued unanimous?
Next zoning request is number 34, Preliminary plat approval, 2102-0017.
This is the preliminary plat for the proposed project, and this request is also being recommended for tabling by the applicant.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, I'm here requesting to table it until next month.
Ms. Battle, I think you stacking up case, huh? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we table this until October 19th.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issued unanimous?
The next zoning request is number 35, BOC 2105-0115, CUP to allow a place of worship.
Advocate?
Steve, I'm here on behalf of the Daylight Industries. I actually just pulled a mock presentation, it's come through, yeah, is there anything for you? I'll admit that when I saw myself as number 35, I could not anticipate being number 3. But I'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Hudson, from here?
If you just submitted the presentation, most likely, what would that gonna have?
I'm ready to go for you.
Okay, please.
So, we're talking about G620 Old Dixie Road. Right now, it's currently being used by nonprofit for their offices and their counseling services, our conditional use permit request to use it for worship services. We're not making any modifications to the building as far as the structure or the capacity. Our only request, may I remove this mic? Our only request is that they be allowed to hold worship services in it on Sunday. We previously went through this process, we had the recommendation of approval from the staff and the ZAG board, but ultimately, this board, through the last time, voted to deny the application, because there were concerns about the parking on the property, whether the church would grow, and ingress and egress from the property. We've read through this application, and I'm sure you can see from your notes, the recommendations now are from the staff and ZAG are denial. Our understanding of that recommendation is that there was still some concern that the Board of Commissioners, based on its previously expressed concerns, would have, continue to have concerns about the parking. So, I wanted to address that very quickly. With our application, we have an updated site plan that we submitted in July that will pave the parking lot, it will strip the parking lot, it will have 11 spaces, it will have a two-way aisle that'll make ingress and egress much safer. Again, this is off of a road with two north lanes, two south lanes, and a center turn lane. So, we believe that those modifications to the parking lot should address the ingress and egress concerns. And we also understand that Commissioner Hambrick was very concerned about the potential for the growth of the church, and so, we did want to address your concerns, because we took your comments very seriously. So, what we have done is the church has developed a plan to have virtual services. So, in the event the church grows and it urges a membership greater than the parking lot in the building or sustained, we will continue that with virtual services. We additionally have a parking agreement with a neighboring property owner, who's agreed to let us use their parking spaces if necessary. And of course, like any, any business wants to grow, any church wants to grow, but we've got a plan for that with virtual services with the neighboring parking lot. And if we get bigger, if we're blessed with the curse of getting bigger than that, then of course, we would do like any other business and look for another property. But it's really important to this church to even get going, that we'd be able to use the property for this purpose at this time. And so, we would request that the conditional use permit application be granted. We understand that there's some concern about the parking lot, so if we're like to condition the improvement on us actually paving and striping the parking lot, we'd be grateful for even that outcome. And I do want to say that the church has the money to do that right now. So, if there is an approval condition on that improvement, it can happen, it will happen, they'll get it done. They're just, of course, as a small church, reluctant to commit that money to improve this facility unless they know that they're actually going to be able to do it. So, that's currently where we stand as far as the facility and as far as things are set up. One of the things that we wanted to address, and we've submitted stuff in the record, and we've also brought this up at previous hearings, but this request is unique in the sense that it's requesting to use the property for religious land use. There are specifically Clayton County ordinances and federal laws that provide that such a request has to be on equal footing with other businesses, or that it can't be a substantial burden on a religious exercise. We would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners very carefully consider those considerations, because this is a place where, right now, they can have 10 cars in the parking lot, they can have the building full to its capacity, and they can run their business, they can do their counseling, and all we're asking to do is do the exact same thing, but worship on the inside. And so, that's why we think that under the religious protection laws that apply to this process, that it should be granted. And we've gone, we've tried very hard to address the parking concerns, and I hope that we have, but we'd be happy to hear feedback or see what else we could do to make, to satisfy the board as far as parking concerns. But I've already run my mouth for a while, so I'd be happy to answer your question.
And I apologize, I didn't ask you before time if you wanted to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal, should somebody oppose your request.
I would like to, yes.
Out of the minutes that you have left, what would you like?
I'd like to reserve five minutes, please.
Five minutes, okay. So, that leaves a minute and a half, or anybody would like to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? This is a public hearing.
Just for record, I have Pastor Ham and Bishop Watson here with me today.
Thank you. Anybody like to speak in favor of? All right. Here we can see no one. Anybody would like to speak? Please come, please, please come to the podium, sir.
I didn't want you to say that we do have some support letters. I don't want you to put those support letters there.
Come to the mic, sir, so we can hear you. And state your name for me.
Bishop DC Watson, 652 Hickory Drive, ours, part of Georgia, unincorporated Clayton County. We do have some support letters, and so, I was just requesting that we could put those letters out so they could be viewed.
I don't think we got it in our presentation, but it can be. I don't think we got it in our presentation, but it can be made available to us.
There are five support letters. They are all in the files.
Okay.
They're from the neighbors, the local community, the mayor's district.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, is there by, anyone who would like to speak against, against this request? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing no one. You can utilize your five minutes or not?
Well, I'd like to make myself available to answer any questions that the commissioners might have. Obviously, we think we've made a lot of changes here that make the parking, the ingress, egress, safe and efficient, and that we have a plan to grow. So, we hope that we've addressed the commission's previous concerns, but we have no way to know except for your.
And I believe there was some conditions to this request. Is that correct?
The staff recommended denial. And so, we're.
No, as far as, let me see. Am I on the right one here? Nope, I am not. Hold on just a second for me. Okay, none. All right, Commissioner Hambrick?
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. We did visit this same request a couple of years ago. I have revisited the location in the last 30 days. Have not seen any changes or things that you're mentioning now. I am gonna go along with the planning and zoning and ZAG recommendation of denial.
May I briefly speak in response to that?
Well, hold on a second, sir. She made a motion, so we'll go through that. Is there a second to her motion?
Second.
All right, any, any questions? All right. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
I'm gonna say nay.
All right, it's 3-1. All right. Next man, please.
The next zoning item is number 36, BOC 2105-0116, which is a PUD rezone to PUD to develop 75 attached townhomes.
Chairman and Board, this request is a PUD, and there is a mark, markup on your agenda. Just making it known that the fruit and vegetable market parcel was removed from the request. Staff recommended approval with eight conditions. ZAG recommended approval with those eight conditions as well. And the applicant is here before you speaking of the project.
Ms. Battle?
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia 30084.
Would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal?
Sure, like, five minutes.
Five minutes?
Um, this particular project is located at the intersection of Popular Springs and Riverdale Road. We are across the street from the senior center. This is intended to be a mixed-use community. We know that this property has a land use designation of mixed use and is currently zoned for general business. And we are asking to convert it to allow for the development of a townhome community with 75 rental units. They will each have a two-car garage. They will have internal driveways that will be maintained and managed by the property management group. There will be an amenity area, as a separate portion of the property, that will include a gazebo and walking trail and play area. There will also be a commercial building that will be located at the intersection of Popular Springs and Riverdale Road. We've already gotten some indication that that space may be a great location for some medical office space, working with the economic development department. We believe that, you know, this is a suitable project for this area. There's not been a lot of new apartment units built. And I think the, the beauty of, of this type of community is that it allows for a larger unit, less density, but more oversight. And we would respectfully request approval of the application based on the conditions presented by staff. We do have some elevations, and I'll take a run through the rest of the PowerPoint so you can get a little better feel for the types of units that we will be proposing on the site. Again, we will have the two-car garages. They're shown. Okay, he got, but that's the general character of the type of, of units that will be developed, except that they will have two-car garages on the first floor. And there are few units that have the rear entry, and that's kind of what you're saying there. So, with that, we would respectfully request again approval based on the staff and the ZAG conditions. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody here like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anyone opposed? Anyone in opposition? All right, if you would, please read the conditions.
The conditions before you and also displayed on the, on the board here. The developer shall comply with the site plan dated on May the 3rd, 2021, titled Popular Springs Road Track. Condition number two, all homes must have front facades constructed of, constructed of 40% brick, stone, hard-cut, stucco, or any combination thereof, or for many facade consisting of hardy plank and other acid materials reflective for architectural appearance for residential homes, as well as compatible with the building elevation submitted by, submitted with the request. Vinyl shall only be permitted to be used in ease of softness. Uh, condition number three, each townhome unit shall be a minimum of 1,400 square feet with a minimum of two-car garages. Condition number four, access to the development shall be via one curb cut from Riverdale Road for the townhome-style development and one curb cut for Popular Springs Road, subject to the approval of the transportation and development department. Continuing the conditions for number five, provide landscape plan for the entrance of the development prior to the TRC submittal, technical review, and site development process. Condition number six, the commercial slash retail space shall not consist of one gas station and a convenience store combination, personal service establishments, including barber shops, hair salons, dry cleaners, et cetera, and no drive-through restaurants. Condition number seven, provide internal pedestrian connectivity to the townhome and to the remainder of the development. And lastly, condition number eight, provide an internal decorative fence along the perimeter of the rear, of the development. And there is one point of clarity for condition number one. Instead of May 3rd, we will use the submitted site plan from June the 24th of this year.
Ms. Battle, you want to utilize your five minutes?
I'd just clarify that that plan takes out the fruit and vegetable stand, which was in the original site plan. So, we just wanted to make sure that we have that accurate. Uh, that's the plan with the last revised date of June 24th, 2021.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, thank you. Um, Ms. Battle, um, it's not another condition, but there was a suggestion, two things mentioned to me this afternoon. One was, and it's not zoned for that anyway, that we not have a nightclub, or any nightclubs.
Throw that in there.
In that, yeah. And I know that, you know, we do have the, you know, no this, no barber shops, no, uh, there were a couple, well, a constituent that would like to see a coffee shop. So, that's offered as a suggestion, you know, to the owners.
And I think that that was part of what they were hoping to be able to do, particularly if they have the medical office space, that there will be some type of coffee shop that will be located.
Okay, okay. Well, with those things in mind, and with the conditions and all, I offer a motion to approve. Second?
Move and second. Those in favor, aye?
Uh, question?
Question?
Yes, call for a question, please.
Go ahead.
Not so much a question, but just to piggyback on what Commissioner Hambrick brought forth in regards to the recommendations. An additional recommendation that I would like to suggest to this board is that we make sure that whoever is the management on that site, they must maintain a operable email, phone number, all contact information. Too many of our facilities like this don't have accurate information. And when we have code enforcement issues, then we get called as commissioners. So, I would like to offer that up as a recommendation to not just help Commissioner Hambrick, but all of us.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, we are. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
The next zoning item is number 37, BOC 2105-0113, which is a FLEP amend MXD to HDR to develop 384 unit multi-family apartments.
Okay. Staff did receive notice from the applicant that they're working some site plan improvements, and they would like to table this request until the next Board of Commissioners meeting, October the 19th. So, this request and associated requests are both being requested to be tabled.
All right, is the applicant or representative here? You said they gave to you in writing?
Uh, yes, we confirmed an email that was sent to.
Commissioner Davis?
Move that we table this until October 19th.
I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Yes. I would like, yes, I would like for us to make sure that there is no way that we can take the companion cases together when we vote on it. I have looked at other jurisdictions, and they're able to do so because rightfully so. If one is not approved, then automatically, you can't move on with the next. Not seeing we do it here, but I think there's a more efficient and effective way that we do that. So, I want to make that recommendation.
Let me ask Mr. Reed about that.
I'm more than willing to.
Is it something that we could do?
I'll talk with you all offline about it, and you all can decide on what you'd like to see.
Fair enough. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next case is number 38, BOC 2105-0114, REZ rezone OIs to RM to develop a 384-unit multi-family apartment complex.
My previous statement stands.
Commissioner Davis?
Move that we table this until October 19th.
I'll second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The next zoning request is number 39, BOC 2106-0118, CUP to allow auto dealership expansion and additional service space.
This request, staff is recommending approval with two conditions. The zoning advisory board found to recommend approval with staff's conditions. And the applicant should be here to represent.
Is the applicant present?
Good evening, I'm Bruce Ben, General Sales Manager at Toyota South, representing Toyota South Atlanta. On behalf of Rich Mahon, our General Manager and Vice President, having to be out of town. But on behalf of Toyota South, I'm requesting.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir. Would you like to save any minutes in rebuttal?
Oh, yes, I'd like to save a few minutes. I'm only gonna take about two or three minutes and then yield them to my partner.
No, how many minutes would you like to save for a rebuttal?
Oh, um, five minutes is fine.
Okay. Please proceed.
All right. All right, on behalf of Toyota South, I'm requesting that you support the expansion of our existing facility on 6865 Jonesboro Road. Um, our current distributor, Southeast Toyota, is requesting that we expand or relocate due to the fact our facility cannot adequately handle, or effectively handle, our over 4,500 service customers monthly. We currently employ over 120 employees at Toyota South. And with this over $2 million investment, we look to employ an additional 30 employees to our company, which would contribute to the betterment of our county and the city. I'm gonna yield my time to.
Good evening. Valencia Williamson, Clayton County Chamber of Commerce, I'm at 2270 Mapson Road, Jonesboro, Georgia 32360. I would agree. We know that Toyota South Atlanta's been around since the 70s, and during that time, they've been great corporate citizens, not only given of their time, but their financial resources. Most recently, they've given $10,000 to Clayton County Public Schools. They give to numerous nonprofits around our county. And they're also active engaged members of the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce, where Rich Mahon, our their Vice President and General Manager, serves on my Board of Directors. So, I am here in favor of their expansion of their existing facility. As Bruce mentioned, they do employ 120 workers and would be looking to hire additional 30 employees with this expansion. The chamber's mission of promoting business, driving economic development, and serving as a catalyst to elevate the quality, quality of life in Clayton County communities in our region is recognized through our organizations advocating for pro-business policies. It's very important that we retain this company into, in our community and not have them leave us to go to a neighboring county. I think it's very important also that they are hiring skilled labor here in diverse positions with diverse skill sets and backgrounds. So, we're certainly looking forward to having them in our community and looking forward to your leadership here tonight as you, I encourage you to vote in favor of their expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Chair. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Fayetteville City Economic Development Group LLC. I was brought in on this particular project because this was a retention issue. They had the possibility of moving to Henry County. So, when I discovered that I was both on board, I worked very, very closely with the Economic Development Office and Ms. Erica Rockwell, and of course, Ms. Williamson here to ensure that we retain this company because they have positive influence in our community. And just for the record, the staff has already had this. These are letters of recommendation that's coming from the Economic Development and the Clayton County Chamber of Commerce. So, with the approval of the staff approval and zoning approval, we look forward to making this a business-friendly community and hopefully that y'all work through this expansion project. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, so at this time, we have a minute and a half left for anybody who want to speak in favor of it? Anyone like to speak in favor of the request? All right, anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, sir, do you want to utilize any of the five minutes that you have left for any last remarks? Okay. Were, were there any conditions?
Yes, two conditions.
Two conditions, please read them.
Condition number one, the subject property to be allowed a conditional use permit for the operation of auto sales on 6.04 acres, consistent with the site plan dated on July 1st, 2021, titled Toyota South Atlanta. Lastly, condition number two, must adhere to all county code and regulations pertaining to site development as set with relief may be granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals or other authorized agencies.
Commissioner Davis?
I would also like to add another condition to that because what we want to do is that's a major corridor there on Highway 54, is that we, Toyota South puts a sidewalk out front there, as well as in that back, where the back fence is back there, begin to put some shrubs to begin to cover up the tracks and everything else.
Sir, please come forward. Mr. Mahon, are you, did you hear the additional conditions that Commissioner? Are you in agreeance to that?
Uh, yes, the sidewalk, sidewalk was an issue, but we, we agreed to adhere to the suggestion, yes, sir.
And the vegetation?
Yes.
Yes.
And the vegetation? All right, Commissioner Davis?
I move that we approve with the, I guess, four conditions now.
Three.
So, you couldn't combine those? Yes, I move that we approve with the three conditions as stated.
All right, so there's a second. I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner?
I just want to also state that we were glad to have Toyota South, but I have to say that that area is of concern with the litter and the trash. And as a county, we get complaints all the time. And. And even though it has a great name, my first car was a Toyota, but we got to clean up. We got to make sure that that area is clean.
Any other questions, statements?
I, I can't say that that area has been blissed quite a few times. And as of today, when I drove by, uh, the trash is, is picked up and under control.
Yes. I, I think that we need to put that in writing because, you know, the only reason I'm saying that is because it, it doesn't matter the name. If we've got businesses coming for us, money is great, but if our citizens are complaining, then we need to make sure that those. And another thing is that if there's any outstanding code enforcement fines, that those are taken care of first and foremost. We need to make sure that that's done.
You good?
Toyota is, is a good customer here. They have planted shrubs, grass, and maintain their property in a manner that I think is adequate, that we don't have to put anything else in writing for them.
All right, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
The next zoning request is number forty, BOC twenty-one zero-six dash zero one one-nine, CUP to allow a new billboard at sixty-three sixty-one Terra Boulevard.
As stated, uh, staff is recommending denial of this applicant's petition. Uh, the zoning advisory board recommended approval of this request with no conditions. The applicant is here.
Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, my name is Alan Freysom. My address is twenty-nine oh-five Piedmont Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh five.
And would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
Um, three minutes.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
Please. No, I was telling the, the clock person to put seven minutes on the clock.
And I have some things for you all. Couple of packets. Thank you, sir. Um, as, as staff pointed out, um, we are trying to replace an existing billboard on Terra Boulevard at the Arrowhead Shopping Center. The, the billboard that we're hoping to replace is, is no longer safely usable. Um, in fact, before we even came to apply for a conditional use permit, uh, we had hoped to just reinforce the existing structure and, and put new ad copy up on the faces. Uh, unfortunately, as we started to work on the billboard, we determined that we could not safely utilize this existing structure, uh, not for outdoor advertising, and, and we just, in good conscience, we couldn't leave it up, knowing that pedestrians walk by this site, uh, on a regular basis. And so, Adam, in abundance of caution, we lowered the structure to the ground. And now what we would like to do is simply replace what's there with a newer, safer, and more attractive structure. In an effort to, to help everyone understand what is there today, I, I've given you these, these small packets. In there is a stamp survey from a registered Georgia land surveyor showing the existing billboard on the property. Uh, the second page is a photograph of the old billboard that, um, that we brought down to the ground. And, uh, the third page is a tax bill from Clayton County for personal property for that billboard, just showing that it does exist, it is there, we're being taxed on it, and we are paying those taxes. Uh, approving this project would provide an economic benefit to the county and to local small businesses. A replacement billboard would generate anywhere from seven to ten times more tax revenues for, uh, for the county than does the current billboard. We have also discussed the possibility of donating the balance of our land to the county. We have, uh, we've talked that over with the Economic Development Office. I think they would be in favor of that, and that's something that we're willing to consider. Um, I also know that they have a new outreach initiative that is trying to focus on outdoor advertising, and we would love to be a partner, uh, in, in that endeavor. In addition to those county benefits, we feel that the new billboard would provide local businesses access to affordable, flexible advertising opportunities. Um, the most older static billboards require thirty or sixty-day, um, advertising campaigns, and a lot of times those contracts can get really expensive. That's a long time commitment. But with, uh, digital billboards, you may be able to shorten that time window and, and greatly reduce the cost to the small business. So if you wanted to run a, uh, a back-to-school campaign for three days for your small business in the area, you could do that with, with a digital billboard. You probably would not be able to do that with traditional static, um, advertising. The last page of your packet is an aerial photograph that shows all of the billboards. I believe there are six, uh, in the immediate area of the Arrowhead Shopping Center. Our location is circled in blue. So as you can see, uh, billboard use is consistent with that corridor in that immediate area, and I would think that's why billboard has already been there for twenty-five or so years. All we want to do is bring it up to modern safety standards, increase the county's tax base, and help, um, local small businesses reach their customers. Our project would have no impact on schools, on roads, on bridges, hospitals, stormwater management, sanitation, or any public utility. And in fact, digital billboards are often used to share urgent and time-sensitive public service messages. I know that Amber Alert, uh, many police stations and sheriff's offices, severe weather advisories, all of those, uh, utilize digital billboards to get their messages out in real time and at no cost to, to the county or its residents. At the end of the day, I think our application is pretty straightforward. We want to erect a new billboard in the exact same location of, uh, an older existing billboard. And I welcome any questions or thoughts you all may have. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone would like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anyone opposed? All right, sir, you've got three minutes if you'd like to have closing comment.
I think I've said it all.
Said it all, okay. All right.
I'm happy to answer any questions if you all have any.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
You've given us this plat where the rent, the sign, Atlanta Rent of Cars, is up, but that sign is down, and this is, what, two thousand and nineteen? I know we've, I've gone by there probably close to a year ago.
Uh-huh.
And there is no sign there. So in a sense, is this a replacement or a new sign request? And how do we begin to go by that? I guess that's kind of a dual question, Mr. GK.
We have been through that question a couple of times with, with the Development Office, and, um, as I, as I stated at the outset, before we, before we approached the county about the conditional use application, what we wanted to do was put up a copy on the billboard that existed at that time. So that survey is dated late twenty nineteen, I believe, November.
Yes.
So, um, and so that was our first plan. Once we, once we got there and, and investigated the condition of the structure, we said, you know, look, this is not safe. It's not safe for our billboard contractors to be working on it. It's not safe for, it's honestly not safe for pedestrians to be walking by through the shopping center on Terra Boulevard, and we said, let's take it down. So we did that in December of nineteen. And then in February of twenty, uh, I believe we came before the ZAG for the first time. Uh, we were slated to come before this body, COVID kind of joined our lives around that time, and, and things got thrown off track. But that's why the board was taken down, is because our initial thought was to go ahead and put up ad copy as it was, and it was, uh, it was not safe to do so.
Commissioner Davis, uh, to answer your question, staff's response to that is that this will be a new sign based upon the language in the code, which would conflict with the standards for a new billboard for conditional use.
Conflict how?
Mr. GK will expound a bit more on that.
Commissioner, thank you for the question. When they came, the issue was, was the bill, we, we didn't see the billboard standing. And if the billboard was standing, they would have had the entitlement of being in non-conforming structure. Because when the code passed for billboards, that would have secured the presence of it. But we couldn't see the billboard standing. We looked at Google Map several, um, some years to see if it was standing, and that was the basis of the denial. So it is a replacement. As you can see on the picture, the, um, the, the message face is on the ground. So it would be a new, a new, uh, request, but the code as written, um, will not support a billboard to be in that location.
Oh, it just doesn't support it at all?
No, no.
I, I guess my, I'm, I'm a little confused. And where does it support it? Because now I'm conflicted with, we have one across, we got six right there in the area.
All those six-
Or five, I should say.
All those six existed before the code was passed. And that is what, what's happening. We wanted to, um, really, if we could see it, the question is, do they still maintain the non-conforming protection for that structure or net? And we couldn't see it.
That's all I have. Thank you. I, I think we have to begin to look at what we want that corridor to be. And right now, I don't believe this is a product that is going to enhance our efforts in accomplishing anything on that corridor. I move that we deny this request.
All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Next.
Next zoning request is a BOC twenty-one zero-six dash zero one two zero, which is the CUP to allow a truck service center.
Advocate present. Please. Have you, did you read? Did you read it? Read off?
I will, I will make a quick statement, and it will continue. Uh, yes, this quest, this request was, uh, recommended approval by staff and also recommended approval by the zoning advisory board, uh, with conditions. There were two conditions associated with this request.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Dana Morse. I'm with Blue Beacon, five hundred Graves Boulevard, Salina, Kansas. Again, we're requesting to locate a truck wash at fifty-nine eighty and fifty-nine ninety twenty growth. Currently, the property is vacant. It's surrounded by truck-related businesses. If you can skip on to the site plan. This is the site plan we submitted. We don't have a lot of flexibility. If you see that yellow line that runs through the middle, by the way, I only need about three minutes.
I'm glad you said that.
There's a, a major gas line that runs through there. Uh, we've worked with the gas company, and we can build a road across there. We can't build a building on it, of course, so we're a little confined as to what we can do with the building. I'm trying to skip down as quick as I can. We currently have two locations in the Atlanta area, and we want to put a third in. Blue Beacon is a family-owned company out of Kansas. Uh, we have a hundred and ten truck washes across the United States. We're twenty-four, I have a twenty-four-seven operation. We do recycle some of our water, uh, because I know that's a concern in, in the world today. Just a quick idea of what the, the process is, is a truck will pull into that queuing lane, which is on the, on the site plan. The driver will drive into the bay. We close the doors. We wash the truck. He goes inside and pays. When he's done, we tell him he's done. He comes out, he drives off. There's no parking, there's no other services. Uh, we don't repair trucks, we don't polish chrome, we just, we wash trucks. Get in line, you wash trucks, and you leave. Safety-wise, we don't do tanker washouts, we don't do cattle hauler washouts or any of those things that are hard on our, uh, on your, but it'll be our, I hope, full sanitary system. We'll employ forty-five to fifty people. Starting wage right now for a, a bay attendant is fifteen fifty, plus they make bonus if it's a good busy location. They'll get life insurance, 401K, vacation, savings plan, dental visions. We try and take care of our employees. Uh, the staff had recommended approval, and so had the ZAG with the two conditions, and we, we don't have a problem with either one of them. As a matter of fact, condition number one has already been taken care of. We recorded that plat. So, um, we'd like, like you to consider approving this.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Does anybody here like to speak in favor of this request? Mr. Jefferson?
Point of clarity, uh, this was the District Two, not District Four.
Thank you, yes. Please.
That's what we were discussing. Oh, it would have been one. It wouldn't have been.
Please. Clock is ticking.
Yes, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson,贊助 economic development group. Uh, with this being zoned, already heavy industrial, and it's like the funnest road, I don't see any reason why this, uh, should not be approved. Uh, if it's the demographics that we're looking for, and as a reminder, we have to be a business-friendly, uh, community as we move forward. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor to? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? So you got three minutes for your closing?
And first, we apologize. We were trying to make recollection of whose it was, so we apologize.
He's taking my territory. You gotta watch out for them folk valley folks.
Would you like to say anything else? Those are remarks? No? Okay. All right. Uh, read, read the two conditions once again.
The conditions as follows. One, the subject property to be allowed as a conditional use permit for the operation of a truck wash facility on five four one six acres of land, consistent with the site plan dated on July eighth, twenty twenty. Condition number two, the advocate must submit and be approved for a lot combination of adjacent parcels prior to obtaining a land disservice permit. That concludes the conditions, uh, for this request.
And you agreed to those two conditions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hambrich?
Well, I'm just finding out. Just clearing it up, that it is in District Two, which I knew that anyway, but anyway. Um, now I'm trying to figure out exactly where on Frontage Road is this.
Commissioner Hambrich, this is south of the, uh, JCPenney, um, warehouse facility, and it's on Frontage Road. Uh, further up, there are some industrial land uses up there, but it's north of there is the JCPenney and the lift, um, the new lift station they have with the repair of the lift cars.
Is it near that Cummins?
Yes.
Headed in that direction?
In that direction. And so it would be south of that Cummins Development.
Oh, okay, because, uh, well, I just got a message about a sidewalk, but I remember us, um, Mr. Mottaco, if I'm not, if I'm incorrect or correct or whatever regarding a sidewalk, because that is not used, right, for, um, uh, we got people, public or whatever?
That's where we live with Cummings.
Right.
It's south of that. Now, this right here is Frontage Road.
Did we put one there?
No. This is, uh, Old Dixie Highway. So as soon as you get off of Old Dixie and go on Frontage-
Right, I know, I mean, I know where it is now, but I'm just, well, you passed a note about a sidewalk, and I'm thinking that I don't see a need for a sidewalk there.
Cummings made a donation to the county that we're holding for your district, um, to-
Want to make a donation?
Use that money someplace else.
Can you all negotiate that same thing?
All righty then.
Okay, so there's no need then for-
No, ma'am.
Sidewalk. Okay. Well, um, and it is an, an area that has trucks and all or whatever, and actually, I welcome, um, even though I didn't know about it, but I do welcome something where trucks can be washed and all and cleaned up and everything. And as a matter of fact, I'm really waiting on someplace where we can actually park those, uh, large trucks and all too, so. Well, that considering in the, uh, conditions and all, I recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
That is her district, that is her district, right? Okay.
Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
I think I know my district.
The next zoning item is number forty-two, B O C twenty-one zero-seven zero-one-three-one, uh, to modify existing conditions for new auto tire sh- sales shop, excuse me.
Chairman and Board, this, this request, um, is located within the villages of Ellenwood P U D. Uh, staff is making a recommendation on denial based upon the current uses that are allowed there in that development. Uh, this on the advisory board, uh, did make a recommendation of denial, uh, from the last ZAG meeting. Uh, the advocate is here to represent the project.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Barak and I'm with G A Ellenwood Amble LLC, located at forty-two zero-nine Autumn Lane in Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, so I'm working on, uh, two new developments here in.
How many minutes would you like to, I'm sorry, in rebuttal?
Five minutes.
Five. Okay. Put five on the clock. Please proceed, sir. I'm sorry.
So yeah, so working on two, two new developments here for Ellenwood. Uh, one of them is, um, a small multi-tenant, uh, retail facility on the corner, uh, which will have a international coffee user, um, with a green logo based in Seattle. I'll let you guess who it is from there. Uh, and then, uh, a doctor's office that we're working with next door, which we do not have assigned a lease yet for that one either. And then next door to that is also a, a national tire, um, tire, um, tire sales facility known as Mavis, who is based out of New York and has about three hundred locations throughout the U S, three that are already in Clayton County. All three are already, uh, are in familiar, um, or similar type developments in front of Walmarts, uh, or a grocery anchored center. Uh, I do have a map showing where they are. Um, so I'd be happy to provide that. So it, so this development is similar to what is already here in the county. Additionally, with P U D zone, that was, uh, created in two thousand and three, uh, there's been several, um, differences that have, that have been approved already. So a precedent has been set, um, for making necessary changes to allow new growth and development within, within the area. And so we feel like these actually brings more opportunity, uh, actually brings more jobs. Um, and so wanted to open up the questions and, or concerns that y'all may have.
Okay. Is anyone here like to speak in favor of the requests? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Please come forward, sir.
My name is Mari Gusta. I'm in the Ellenwood unincorporated area where this is closely going to be located. Um, after talking with several residents and also talking with them as well, I fully support this due to the fact that it will bring competitive prices for, uh, auto care when it comes to it. And then also with the coffee shop, that is something that we are definitely looking forward to having in our community, especially since it'll be something different compared to all of the other coffee shops that's in that specific area. And so these are things that we are really wanting because it will add value to our community, but also it'd be something that all of our community members would actually be pleased about having, especially after conversations with not only them, but also with the developers as well. And after getting a better understanding of how they're going to develop the property and also the landscaping and the look, we was definitely pleased with how that's gonna aesthetically look within our community as well.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anyone like to speak in opposition? All right, sir. You have five minutes if you want to have a closing remark of any kind?
Well, I just want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come up here to present this. Um, we're excited about this opportunity. We feel like, again, it brings value, but does bring full-time jobs. Um, it does bring sales volume. Um, so if there are any questions or concerns that you all have, we'd love the opportunity to try to address them at this time.
Well, I will say this. I spoke to, I don't recall if it was, it was you. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you got with the community. So you got input from the community and I appreciate that. I had a town hall meeting on Saturday. Nobody had anything bad to say about this development at that time as well. Actually, they're excited about the little company with a little green, uh, label on it out of Seattle. They really love that idea. And I agree with Mr. Augusta that it will be a welcome, uh, development, all three stores in that area. I went and paid a visit to one of the stores that's already operating here in Clayton County and it was a, a clean, nice, uh, well-kept store. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this motion, this, uh, request. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Chairman and Board Members, what was the final count on that? I'm sorry. Didn't hear the final.
The what?
The final count?
It was unanimous.
Unanimous? Okay.
Uh, the next zoning request is number forty-three, uh, B O C twenty-one zero-seven dash zero-one-three-two, which is a text amendment for ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash one ninety-six.
Yes, this, this text amendment, right? Yes. Who was presenting?
Good evening. I have ordinance twenty-twenty-one one ninety-six, which is an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance as amended specifically Appendix A zoning, Article One, Basic Provisions, Section one point five, define words. So it's defined the term fitness center, to amend Article Three zoning district content permitted uses and conditional uses section, sections three point two-one, three point one-nine, three point two-five and three point three-five. In substitute lieu, there are new subsections three point two-one, three point one-nine, three point two-five and three point three-five, to update the permitted uses and conditional uses sections, to provide an effective evidence ordinance, to provide for appeal or conflicting ordinance, to provide for codification, to provide for severability and other purposes. The short, um, thing, what this is doing is that, um, when the zoning ordinance was amended some time ago, the, what was, what this bore past was what you're doing now, but the describener's error that was sent to municipal code. And so some of it looked like you had conditional uses that were in fit, conditional uses for fitness centers and also permitted uses for fitness centers. So it had a conflict. So this corrects that, that error and makes it clear that, uh, fitness centers and gymnasiums are permitted uses and also defines, uh, fitness centers in a way that will make us competitive, uh, with surrounding jurisdictions. And I'll let Patrick speak, uh, to that. Mr. J.
Mr. Jackie.
Uh, Chairman and Commissioners, um, this has been an ongoing issue where we couldn't approve, um, aerobics, instructional dance and things of that nature in the shopping center that citizens frequent, that also exist in, in, in other jurisdictions. So what we, um, uh, in, in addition to cleaning up the, um, um, uh, describener's error in the code, we also have a definition that, the definition is that in GB, all instructional dance and all things that are known on the, um, um, fitness center that is more than to, to people now that they do kickboxing, karate, Taekwondo and things like that, can be done under GB. The reason why you saw all the mix, um, the mixed uses, um, because in twenty eighteen, now there will be permissible in general business, uh, mixed industrial, commercial district, mixed residential district and mixed district. The reason being that in those districts, all uses in GB are allowed in them. So that's why, once we corrected it in GB, they will be available in those, in those, uh, also districts. And as you can see, all the mixed use, use districts are high intensity use type, type of districts. So it will make us competitive to other jurisdictions.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, it's public hearing, right? Anybody, anyone here like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone opposed to? All right, here none. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I did see one, Mr. J. The small, s- small box discount stores. Is that in a special use now according to this?
Uh, yes. The small camp discount stores has, um, um, a distance criteria that once you get into that distance criteria, it's through C U P.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any others? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Next.
The next zoning item is number forty-four, B O C twenty-one zero-six dash zero-one-two-three, rezoned to R M to develop a hundred and seventy unit attached town home apartment communities.
How many minutes in rebuttal? Get that out of the way.
Five.
Five. Okay. Please.
Uh, good evening. Um, again, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Haversham at Northlake, um, Tucker, Georgia. Um, we are here seeking a approval of this R M, uh, project. It is a, uh, town home, uh, apartment community. We believe that it's an appropriate use as we are along a major arterial road. Um, we are surrounded by, um, higher intensity, um, residential development north of, uh, the site or adjacent to the site. Um, addition, additionally, um, when we look at this particular project, um, we believe that, um, the addition of these units will help, um, with the revitalization of this section of eighty-five. Um, this project, um, is intended to be, um, a higher-end, um, market rate town home, uh, community. Um, we're looking at rents in roughly the seventeen hundreds and up. Um, this allows for larger units as opposed to us coming in with a multi-family type product, um, on the site. Um, and, um, believe that having these larger units as well as being a market rate, um, project, um, will again allow for the continued revitalization of this particular corridor. Um, I think staff is trying to find my PowerPoint. So I do appreciate that. Um, we'll try and move quickly through. Let me go to the next slide. It's my five minutes. It's ticking. There we go. All right. Tyler, we're gonna keep it moving down. Thank you, boy. You can see we're south of, um, Battle Creek Road. Keep going. Again, commercial corridor. Keep going. Um, the, uh, current zoning is, uh, general business and U V. Uh, we are seeking to rezone to R M. Uh, the future land use, um, is high density residential on this property. So we are consistent. We keep going. Again, here's the site. We've got a multi-family product, um, immediately kind of northwest of us. We've got a single family subdivision that actually, um, is more of a cluster home, uh, type project that's adjacent to the site. And we do have buffers in between, um, our project and the adjacent project. Um, our primary point of entrance is off of O'Hare. Um, if we go to keep going down to the next slide, we have agreed, um, on the site, um, with the hundred and sixty-eight town homes, um, there will be a two-car garage on each of the units. Um, if we can keep going, uh, and you can just see, um, some of the fencing that's proposed, the landscaping along the perimeter. Uh, you just slide through there. God, just, you were rolling. There you go. Uh, there will be a property management company that will operate on this property. Um, they will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of all the common areas, the open space areas, walking trails, uh, detention ponds and the like on the site. Um, they do require criminal background checks. They will be, um, restrictive, uh, against aggressive breeds of dogs and the lease agreements will respect, um, improper parking, um, within the community. We keep going. You can see the club and the pool house, uh, many packages, um, that are proposed for the site. Tyler, move it slow. Interiors. And I think that's pretty much, uh, I think that's it. We can land that. Uh, and there's some exterior elevations. Um, to the extent that you all have any questions, we certainly are here to, to answer those and would respectfully request a recommendation of approval, um, based on staff's, uh, recommendation. Thank you.
All right, sir. Anyone here like to speak in favor of the request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? You have any additional comments? Any questions for Miss Battle?
Miss Battle, I know you've had a long night this evening.
You have no clue. Okay. I'm powering on two hours of sleep, but I'm still here.
Thank you. Um, the, again, these are market rates, uh,
Yes.
units, correct?
Yes, sir. Market rate apartment.
And the reason they're not apartments and they're townhouses, the townhouses, what?
The townhouses, I mean, what we have seen here is that we could have had a vertical, um, kind of typical standard apartment complex, um, that would have been proposed on this property, particularly because it's high density residential. But we weren't really trying to max out the site. I mean, that would have allowed for us to have a much higher density. We feel that those, um, units at, um, the, the hundred and seventy units that we have now, um, that it does allow for a larger footprint on the interior. Uh, these units will be roughly fourteen to fifteen hundred square feet in size. Um, so that's, um, a, a nice sized unit. Um, we'll have the two-car garages. We know that, um, you know, our intent here is to have units that are higher end. Uh, we're not simply looking to jam as many people in, but, um, to have a really quality product. Um, and I think you could see that by the amenities, um, the facades, um, that are being proposed.
Okay. And we do have the condition of the sidewalks, um, surrounding that property?
Yes. Um, we're always required to have sidewalks, um,
Thank you.
along all the street frontages, um, on the external. And we also have sidewalks internally as well.
Okay. Now, what about as far as, I'm thinking, turn in there, it's to the left. Is that, yeah, it is to the left once you turn on O'Hare, correct?
Uh, yes.
So as far as.
Depending on which direction you're coming from, but everything on this project, once you turn onto O'Hare, is a right turn.
Is a right turn?
Yes.
I don't know why I keep thinking left.
Yeah.
So we will have a right turning lane within that, excuse me, so that the other traffic can continue through with that?
Yes.
What type of buffer is being presented in the back between that and those adjacent homes, that subdivision?
Um, my eyesight is not that great. So Tyler's gonna have to, it's like, I don't have that information right in front of me. Yes, whatever the county code, um, requires for that buffer. I believe it's about, uh, thirty feet, forty feet.
Okay. I, I'm just requesting that that be of not just the normal, I call them junk trees that is thrown up, but it's, it's very fence. Great. Great.
Along with the additional landscaping, um, to the extent of, uh, the county office requires us to add any foliage in order to beef up the.
Now, is there any lighting out front of the units, uh, out front of the apartment, the townhomes? Excuse me.
Yes, there will be lighting. Yes, sir.
Great. Okay.
Any other questions? All right, Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve this with the said conditions.
I'll second the motion. Hold on.
Have we already read the conditions?
No, we, we haven't. I can read them with the, uh, proposed conditions.
Thank you.
Yes, please do.
Okay. The first condition, the development shall be no more than one hundred and seventy rental town home units, uh, consistent with the conceptual site plan submitted by the applicant, uh, dated, uh, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Number two, all town home units to have a minimum of two-car garages and a minimum front setback of twenty feet from the edge of the curb. Condition number three, parcels, uh, will need to be combined prior, uh, to receiving a land disturbance permit. Condition number four, a tree plan would be required prior to obtaining a building permit and land disturbance permit. Condition number five, provide a minimum ten percent. Condition number five, provide a minimum ten percent guest parking throughout the development must be reflected on the applicant's site plan. Condition number six, the development shall be consistent with the architectural renderings submitted via email on August twentieth, twenty-one. We have the addition of condition number seven, must provide an eight-foot wide sidewalk along the frontage of Jonesboro Road and O'Hare Drive. And we have condition number eight, the development shall commence within one year. And lastly, condition number nine, shall include an internal fencing within the buffer of the rear of the property.
Great.
Yeah, and grants with that, Ms. Battle?
Yes.
All right, let's do it again, then. Commissioner Davis.
I move that we approve this with the said conditions.
And I will second the motion. Any questions?
No, just a couple cleanup items. The statement was made about the trees, but your recommendation was that the fence goes within the property. We need to double-check because I believe that thirty feet is undisturbed, because we ran into that issue with another property, so we need to double-check that. And then the other thing is, the other county code says that all trash cans must be at the rear of the property. So just a cleanup item, we need to revisit that, not for approval for this, but at the same token, especially if they're going to be rental properties, we need to make sure that the county code is consistent with what we're approving, because what was shown today was, that's just, is minor, but if our county code says one thing and we're voting on something different, we want to make sure that we're together on that.
Commissioner, I can say that with regards to the fencing, I think the intent is to have the trees and then to have thirty-foot, the fencing on the interior of the buffer so that the residents on the other side will see trees first, not the fence first.
Thank you for that clarity.
Any other comments or statements, questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Great. The next zoning request is number forty-five, BOC twenty-one zero-seven dash zero-one-two-nine, which is a min map to HDR one-hundred-and-thirty-eight, fee simple, single-family attached, excuse me, attached town homes.
Thank you. Planning staff recommended approval of this request. The zoning advisory board recommended approval as well. The applicant is here to represent.
Ms. Battle, how many minutes?
Five.
Five on the clock, Ken. You know the drill. Go ahead and say.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Haversham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight four. This project is actually a fee simple project that we are proposing for this site. It is on the opposite, well, I guess it's on technically the same side on eighty-five, just higher up. We believe that this is an appropriate use for this property as well as a fee simple product. You can see that we have throughout the project additional parking spaces, they will all have two-car garages, and I don't know, you have the PowerPoint with the elevations on there as well. But again, this is intended to be a higher-end product. These units should be selling in the high three hun, uh, two hundreds, high two hundreds, I guess they wish it, Mr. High Thirty, two hundreds on this particular site. We, again, are providing for two-car garages. I know that Commissioner has a preference for making sure that we have a condition concerning trash collection, that we'll have one trash collector and that they will put the cans in the appropriate location, but there will be coordination there. We do have internal amenity areas on the site. There will be a swimming pool and a cabana that will be located on the property, which will be maintained along with the detention pond and other green space areas by the HOA. We also are providing along the exterior a buffer as well, and we respectfully request that this application be approved. And we've got, again, additional information regarding the pool and the cabana that will be installed along with the other amenities. Thank you.
All right, anybody here want to speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? All right, do we have any conditions?
This is just the future land use map amendments, there are no conditions.
Commissioner, uh, do you have any last comments?
Uh, no, but I'm gonna say ditto when we get to the next one, hopefully.
Commissioner Frank.
Because I thought it was the first, I thought it was the rezoning. Sorry.
Oh, thank you so much. I really don't have any other questions regarding this property. The only thing is, I keep making the statement, because again, we get the calls. When we build these townhomes, our county code still states that the trash must be in the back, and that when you're building these type of structures, our code is not in line with what we're approving, but at the end of the day, it's something we gotta do. And I would say to just make sure that, once again, that whoever maintains the property is also registered, even though they're purchased, generally there's somebody that's gonna maintain the grounds.
Yes.
We want to make sure that we have their information registered so that we can get in contact with them if we need to. But other than that, I just want to also clarify with the fee simple, they will be for sale. You will not be leasing any of them at all.
Um, we don't have control over who might lease up to their soul, but what I'm saying is, is we are selling to owners.
And you're not selling to investment groups?
No, we are not selling to investments.
Okay.
No investment sales by the developer, so.
Mr. Reed, you heard that, because that's one of the things we've been tackling.
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Of course, did we add on the one traction service?
This is the, just the land use map.
I'm sorry. Okay, they're good to go.
All right, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, next.
Mr. Chairman, the last item of the evening is number forty-six, BOC dash twenty-one zero-seven zero-one-three-zero, which is the REZ rezoned to RM for a one-third, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight fee simple, single-family attached town.
This request has four conditions recommended by staff, and it was recommended with those four conditions by the zoning advisory board.
Ms. Battle, five minutes?
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes.
Can we go ahead and add to this?
So put two minutes on the clock.
Michelle Battle with Battle Law, we are here, as indicated previously, for the proposal for these fee simple town home units. If you all have any questions, we are happy to respond to them. Thank you.
All right, anybody here like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Well, I'm sorry, got it backwards. Anybody in favor of? Anybody want to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? All right, now this has conditions, correct?
That is correct. There are four conditions, so I'll read them for the record. One, the development shall be consistent with the conceptual site plan and proposed amenities submitted by the applicant dated on May third, twenty-twenty-one. Number two, all attached town homes shall have a minimum of two-car garages. All town homes shall have a minimum setback of twenty feet from the edge of the right-of-way. Condition number three, the architectural designs shall match the conceptual renderings submitted by the applicant via email dated on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. Lastly, condition number four, provide a minimum of guest parking for ten percent of the units as submitted site plan.
Tyler, keep it away.
That concludes the conditions.
Thank you. Any last comments, Ms. Battle?
No, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Frankie?
Commissioner Davis, Gary.
The only thing I would add is that I see right above units, well, Area Seventy-four, can you go ahead and put a, some type of a sitting area behind there as well, just to give something, sitting area or something there? You only have one small parking park. There's not much amenities with this project. That's the only thing that I really see.
Got it.
And the other thing, I do see it as revealing it, not quite sure we can do much about it, but these type of projects, we do get complaints about cars staying in that parking lot area. We generally can deal with it if it's not a operable vehicle, unoperable vehicle, I should say, but.
Well, maybe we can put it in a condition, there's no overnight parking in the guest parking spot.
Correct, that's what I'm headed to. I don't know if we can do it legally, or if y'all need to do it through your HOA, not quite sure.
I don't think that's a problem to have it in the condition.
Good, that's the, that's the only thing. And then the other thing is the same thing for no overnight parking on the street.
That's fine.
Put it in as a condition if we can do it legally as well.
That's fine.
And of course, you know the pedestrian lighting.
We do have pedestrian lighting.
Yeah, awesome. Good to go. I make a recommendation that is approved.
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed. I almost forgot about that.
Mr. Reed, does she have an office at our county here?
Um, it's, I think it's assigned that she has so many interested developers willing to do business here in Clayton.
Do we need executive session?
Uh, yes, sir, just on litigation.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Everybody have a great evening. All right, motion to reconvene. I'll make the motions, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
I have a settlement agreement in the matter of Kesha Brown Backer and her capacity as the mother of Jayla DeLeonardo, and releasing Clayton County, Georgia Victor Hill, and Jay Guthrie, and that is arising out of a motor vehicle collision on or about May tenth, twenty-twenty, involving a vehicle that was fleeing from a Clayton County sheriff's deputies, and the amount of that is four hundred thousand dollars to pay payable to Kesha Backer and her attorney, Cash Klugler, in residence.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Here and none? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good night.